Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 12, 2017 Planning and Zoning Meeting. I'd like to ask everyone to turn off their cell phones if it interferes with the electronic devices that we have. I'd like to remind everybody this is a public meeting. We'll have a staff presentation and then the applicant will get up. After that, if you would like to speak for or against these zonings, then please come to the podium and state your name. Now, we do have a couple of items that we're going to table, so I'll go through those real quick if you can just bear with us. Zoning Request Z17012, rezoning from LC and R15 to RAD conditional for the development of 43 townhomes at a density of 7.83 units per acre. Land Lot 558 through 3030, 3040, and 3050, Atlanta Road. This is John Whelan Homes and Neighborhoods. I'd ask for a motion at this time on 2017-214.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion concerning zoning request Z17012 to table this item until July 10, 2017 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Campo. Do we have a second? A second? Ms. Emily Hine Warren, thank you. Everyone, please vote. Motion passes. We have a abstain. Oh, okay. Thank you. Sorry, I'm a fill-in tonight. In the case of zoning request Z17011, zoning amendment to modify the current approved site plan and building elevations. 3.3 acres at land lot 490, northwest corner of intersection of Atlanta Road and Belmont Boulevard. David Weekly Homes would like to hear, I'd have a motion on this. Motion, Ms. Lightfoot? Second. Z17011 is tabled. Please vote. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion concerning zoning request Z17011. I request that we table this item until July 10, 2017 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting.
Thank you. Everyone, please vote. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is zoning request Z17. R22 RAD conditional for development of 15 townhomes at 3.64 units per acre. Land lots 332 and 333 southwest corner of East West Connector and Fontaine Road. Mr. Rusty.
Good evening. The first item you guys are going to hear tonight is a request from David Weekly Homes for a piece of property that is currently located in Cobb County at the corner of East West Connector and Fontaine Road, the southwest corner. You'll hear this item tonight. You'll make a recommendation to Mayor and Council. It'll be heard by the Mayor and Council at the July 17 meeting. The subject property is an undeveloped piece of property. It's approximately 4.12 units an acre. It's located in Ward 7. In the county, it has a current zoning of R20, which is a single-family zoning classification with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to RAD conditional here in the city. And along with this rezoning, they're requesting annexation. The proposal is to build 15 single-family homes at a density of 3.64 units per acre. The city has notified the county with respect to the requested annexation and rezoning. And the county has responded back with a letter of non-objection, so they don't currently object to the zoning. In the county, this piece of property has a land use classification of low-density residential. With this request, we'll be requesting a modification from, a modification land use map from low-density to moderate-density residential, which is up to 4.5 units per acre. And as you can see on the future development map, the properties to the north and east are, have a land use designation of suburban residential, which is under three units per acre. And the properties to the west and south have a land use designation of moderate-density residential, which is up to 4.5 units per acre. Here's the proposed site plan. As you can see, the 15 lots are off a new proposed private road with a common park area in the middle and around the periphery. The applicant is proposing the following minimum setbacks: a front setback 25 feet and 20 feet for lots 3, 4, and 15. A side setback of 5 and a rear of 20. This is the location of the proposed detention facility. Here is the proposed open space throughout the development. And in addition, they're proposing a 20-foot landscape buffer along the adjoining single-family residential. With this request, they're requesting six variances. The first being a reduction in lot size from 15,000 to 5,500. A reduction in lot width from 100 feet down to 12. And a reduction in front setback from 35 to 25. A reduction in side setback from 10 to 15. A reduction in rear from 30 to 20. And a reduction in the road frontage for a lot from 40 feet to 12.
I think you, I think you may have inadvertently misspelled. On the side, it's from 10 to 5. You said 10 to 15.
Oh, I'm sorry, 10 to 5. I apologize. Four of those requests, staff is supportive of them. Basically, they have to do with the lot size and the setbacks. And those are consistent with variances granted in other infill developments in the area. Staff is not supportive of the variance for the reduction in the minimum lot width and the reduction in the required road frontage for a residential lot. And with that, that'll, that'll affect our recommendation when we move forward. And when we get to that, I'll explain that further. Here are the proposed home elevations for the site. Here's the site. It's a wooded lot. And then here's the adjoining properties and what they look like, to give you some context. Commute, as I stated before, we don't support two of the variances, which would allow them to build the 15 lots. With that being said, we're recommending approval of the rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional for 14 lots. So they would have to lose probably that lot 13 because it doesn't meet the lot width and road frontage requirements at a density of 3.39 units per acre with the following conditions. Standard conditions from Section 1201, related to composition of the homes, an undisturbed buffer along the right-of-way, protective covenants, open space requirements, storm water management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, street light requirements, burying of debris, tree ordinances, and finally, an archaeological study. In addition to the standard conditions, we're requiring special conditions. Special Condition 16 is, sets the minimum setbacks with the front setback of 25 feet and 20 feet for lots 3, 4, and 15. That's to allow them to be able to maintain the 20-foot landscape buffer along the residential property. Number 17, a minimum driveway length of 22 feet. Number 18, the requirement for a five-foot sidewalk and two-foot grass buffer within the development and along the outside. Number 19, there should be a minimum 20-foot undisturbed buffer or 20-foot landscape buffer in accordance to Section 503 along the shared property line in the adjoining single-family residential homes. Number 20, no portion of the storm water management facility should be located on any of the residential lots. It must be on HOA property. 21, if the detention facility retaining wall is visible from the right-of-way at Fontaine or East West Connector, it's got to have a decorative brick facade or stone facade. It's a high-visibility corner. Number 22, this pertains to any trees within the limits of disturbance. They either have to be protected in accordance to our tree protection plans, or they have to be removed. 23 requires the approval, allows for the approval of zoning condition upon the site plan submitted with the omission of Lot 13 and meeting all the stipulations stated above. And 24 ties the approval of the zoning to the building elevations provided. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Martin. I appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions for Rusty? There being none, with the applicant, please step forward. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, temporary or not, and Planning and Zoning Board members. My name is Ellen Smith. I'm an attorney with Holtney Zach Kaufman Wasserman, 100 Galleria Parkway, Suite 1800, Atlanta, Georgia. I have the pleasure of representing the applicant, David Weekly Homes, before you this evening. And Rusty has given you all the details. I just have a little bit more that I want to put before you, just to put this in perspective a little bit. Because this isn't the first time this particular four-acre tract has come before the city, at least. It may not have been before you for a while, but there have been a number of iterations proposed since this four-acre tract has been for sale. And I want to put that in context because I think it's helpful when you see what we've proposed. This is a 4.2-acre unimproved lot right now, trees. And we are bounded entirely by county-owned property. So a part of this application, of course, or I'm sorry, by city property. Part of this application is the annexation that will resolve an unincorporated island issue. So we would be annexing within the city if this rezoning and annexation applications are approved. We are looking to change the density. The density would increase based on the current city map from less than three units the acre to less than 4.5 units per acre. We are requesting the 15 homes. And I'm going to give you the difference between where we are and where staff is on 14 versus 15. We would like for you to consider recommending approval of the 15 per the site plan, including Lot Number 13. And that still gets us to about 3.66 units per acre, well under the 4.5 units that we are going to be classified for under the future land use map. And I want to show you a rendering, the site plan in rendering, if I can get to it and not mess Rusty's presentation up. So this is the same site plan that Rusty had shown you, just colored in a little bit so that you can see pretty significant open space, green area that we are including along with the detention area with the decorative wall that Rusty and staff have proposed along with landscaped and undisturbed buffer to the west and the south. That's with respect to the neighborhood that's adjacent to us and was an important feature of the project for our neighbors. But you can see access to the property will be from Fontaine Road. All the proposed homes will be front-entry homes. You saw the elevations. I can show those to you again. There is a mix of materials and aesthetics to provide for just a nice neighborhood feel for this subdivision. And I do just want to clarify, these are single-family detached. These are not townhome. So last year Ashton Woods had proposed a townhome project that would have been 32 townhomes on this same four-acre tract. That would have been a density that was a little more than double what we proposed, 7.7 units to the acre. Before that, I think there has been discussion with the property owner about potentially a daycare on this site and several other more commercial uses of this property that may not have made it all the way to this board for hearing, but have certainly been considered and discussed with staff. With that said, we think that the 15-unit, single-family detached product that we're proposing is really a nice fit for this area and for this property. We also are looking at homes that will be priced in the 500s range. The townhomes last year that would have come before you were in the $300,000 range. We think this is in keeping with the area and the neighborhood. Since filing the application, we've been in contact with Oak Hill Subdivision. I think you're going to hear from someone with them tonight. They generally, I think it's fair to say, support this application, including the full 15 homes. And staff and we both have provided written analysis. I won't go through all of that. Certainly happy to answer any questions. We do ask for a number of concurrent variances. And the two that staff support, or the two that staff don't support are variances number two and number six. And those are both tied to lot width. And if you look at our site plan, at the top portion of the site plan, right under the detention area, Lot Number 13 is the one that is in question and is requiring these two variances. You can see as it's drawn that that's a flag lot, essentially. We don't think, from a developer's standpoint, that this size lot compromises the integrity of the neighborhood. It's a very buildable lot. It's just that it is a flag lot so that the driveway would come down to the street and not be the full 100-foot width of a lot at the street that staff recommends. Just to give you an idea, however, across the street in Fontaine Lakes, there is a similar situation. If you'll look on your screen, at the very left-hand side of the screen, you'll see lots 15, 14, 13, and 12. These are in Fontaine Lakes. And it looks like there's a road. It's not really a road. It's a private alley. And those four lots, just like Lot Number 13 on our subdivision, are essentially a flag lot, especially Number 12. It has frontage that only fronts on that cul-de-sac. That's the only public portion of the road. So what I'm saying is that you have done something like this before. This would not set a precedent that the city hasn't entertained before with respect to the subdivision. We respectfully request you consider it. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Appreciate your time. I'm joined this evening by Beth Kidd with David Weekly Homes. She's Land Acquisition Manager. We can answer any questions you may have, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. This time, I'll open it up to any of the Planning and Zoning members that would have any questions. Of the applicant. All right. Is, I remind everybody, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of or against this item, please step up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Barrett Carter. I live at 4504 Oak Brook Drive in the Oak Hill Subdivision across the, or actually just south and to the west of this proposed development.
Good evening, Mr. Carter.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I want to start off by saying that I've had the pleasure to work with Ms. Kidd and Ms. Smith for the last couple of weeks. As somebody who's just a citizen and not tied into this development or into this process, they've been extremely communicative to us, very informative to us, and answered all of our questions, which I will say from just a regular citizen's standpoint, that's helpful on our side. I have been a part of what has been proposed in the past, and that's not been supported. I am on the board for our neighborhood, but I'm not here representing our board. I'm here representing just myself as an individual landowner. We've gone through iterations of a daycare facility, of other proposed sites. I think there was one at 32 units that were done there. Our concern was ingress and egress. And having such a higher volume in that location was a concern to us as a community. Since we proposed our concerns or put out our concerns to others in the past that have come to develop or look at this property and most recently to David Weekly, they have been the most responsive and given us the most information. What we did ask for was because our property, I don't have the map in front of you that you all can look at, but we're the neighborhood that's to the west and to the south. So we have seven or eight homes that are in direct viewshed, if you will, of this development. And they have been willing to not only talk to us about what they can put in there, but ask us what should we do in that buffer area to soften up. My understanding is there's an elevation change between our property line and theirs, but they're also willing to leave some of the more mature trees and also add some additional landscaping to buffer that area. So for those reasons, we're supportive of it. And if you'll pardon me, I just want to look at my notes. We don't have, and I say we, I say I, and I've not heard voice from the community about their concerns on 15 versus 14. So I believe it's safe to say that we, it matters not to us as a community whether they have 15 lots or have 14. But we generally are much more supportive of what is currently being proposed now by David Weekly Homes versus what we've seen in probably eight to 10 years. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or against this rezoning? Yes. Ms. Hine Warren?
Ellen, is the 13 lot a make or break for David Weekly Homes?
It is.
Really?
Yes.
And that being, what, profit alone, or what's the reasoning on that? I mean, that looks like a really tight lot to me in general, especially when you're given eight, plenty of room, and they're staring at the detention area behind them.
Sure. I mean, I think since the middle of the application, and I'll just note, we submitted it, I think in April, even though the slide said July, we've gone back and forth. I mean, the land planner has looked at the topo, the detention pond, where everything can fit. And this is the best plan. And it did change from the original application. Actually, we did shift and provide more site space to 13, 14, and 15 than originally had been proposed. I'm not going to stand and say it's not a tight site. What I am going to say is that from David Weekly's perspective, Lot 13 isn't any marginalized lot for any reason. It wouldn't be a lesser lot in the neighborhood for any reason at all.
Can, are there any amenities? Are you planning any amenities at all for these lots?
Yes. So the amenities, and I think they're shown on here. There's common area, just in the green space and the open space, there is a fire pit proposed and walking trails as well.
What about parking? Is there any additional parking for the neighborhood, or is it just street parking?
Street parking, but also driveway parking. I mean, since it's a single-family, it's, it's not like the townhome, you know, projects where there's not enough driveway for a car to fit. In fact, I know that's one of the special conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, at this time, I'd like to hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff's recommendations and conditions, including reducing the number of lots from 15 to 14.
Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Campo. And at this time, I'll have to call for a vote, please. Motion passes. Thank you. Motion passes. And it was a five to nothing. This time, we'd like to hear... Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is item Z17008. Rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for development of three single-family homes.
This rezoning request is a part of a request that we handled back in 2014 as a board. The Mayor and Council approved a 12-lot subdivision, basically that adjoins North Cooper Lake Park. That subdivision has been developed. They completed it in the fall of last year. The same developer has now purchased, or is under contract to purchase, an adjoining lot to the north at the corner of North Cooper Lake Road and Spyglass. He is proposing to subdivide that lot into three single-family lots and tear down the existing home and build three new homes at an overall density of 2.75 units per acre. The original subdivision, Park Place, was approved with 12 lots. During the plating and development, that got knocked down to 11 lots. The applicant is requesting... The applicant is requesting to transfer that twelve lot over to this development and include the whole, all three lots as phase two of the Park Place subdivision. With that being said, this subject site is at the, at the northeast corner of Spyglass Court in, in North Cooper Lake Road. It's approximately seven tenths of an acre. They're proposing three single-family homes that would face onto Spyglass Court, but be accessed through an access easement off of North Cooper Lake Drive. The request is from R fifteen to RAD conditional. And as you can see, the properties to the north and east are zoned R fifteen. The Park Place subdivision is adjoining green property to the south. And the properties to the south and west are zoned RAD. There is no future land use change with this request. It'll remain suburban residential, which is under three units per acre. And as you can see, the whole area has a suburban residential land use classification. Here's the proposed site plan. As you can see, the three lots will front on Spyglass Court, which is the main road into Park Place subdivision. And their driveways will be off an access drive to the rear of the property off of North Cooper Lake Road. He is requesting the following: Minimum setbacks, a front setback of ten feet, an interior side of five, a street or exterior side of ten, and a rear of twenty. These are similar setbacks to what was granted with the Park Place subdivision zoning. Here's a twenty-foot access easement along the back. And that access easement will serve these three homes in addition to the adjoining property to the east, which is a single-family home. And that easement is in place today and is, is the only option for that home to be accessed is through that easement. Here's the proposed open space with amenity. They're proposing a fifteen-by-fifteen-foot pavilion at the corner of North Cooper Lake and Spy, and Spyglass. And then they're also proposing a ten-foot landscape buffer along the adjoining properties to the, to the east. With this request, they're requesting five variances. First one related to lot size and a reduction from fifteen to ten thousand square feet. And then a lot width reduction from a hundred feet down to fifty-five. And a reduction in front setback from thirty-five down to twenty. And a reduction in side setback from ten feet down to five. And a rear setback reduction from thirty to twenty. As I said before, we're supportive of these variance requests. They're similar to what was granted for the Park Place subdivision and for North Cooper Lake Place across the street. Here are the proposed home elevations. These are very similar to the home elevations that are currently out there. Here's the subject property, and this is a view from North Cooper Lake Road. And then these are the adjoining properties or adjacent properties. And these pictures are from Spyglass Court and North Cooper Lake. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning of the subject property from R fifteen to RAD conditional for three single-family homes at a density of two point seven five units per acre with following conditions carried over from the two thousand and fourteen zoning case. And changes to those conditions will be highlighted in red because some of them aren't applicable anymore. Standard conditions from section twelve oh one are applied except for condition number two, eight, and seventeen. The rest are all the ones that we normally go over. I'm not going to read them all out for you. Special conditions, we added these in addition to the standard conditions. Condition fifteen deals with the setbacks and lists the setbacks I talked about earlier. Sixteen requires the minimum lot size to be ten thousand square feet. And seventeen requires the minimum floor area to be two thousand square feet. Number eighteen is removed. Number nineteen requires a minimum driveway length, twenty-two feet. They'll meet that easily. Twenty is removed because it no longer applies. Twenty-one, the responsibility for water and sewer is developers' responsibility, and they've got to get approval from the Public Works Director for any improvements. Number twenty-two, no storm water management facility or portion arrows should be located on any portion of the proposed lots. Twenty-three, the proposed storm water management facility should be tied to the existing storm system on Plant Road. The applicant is proposing to use the existing storm water management facility within the Park Place subdivision. They'll have to certify that the additional volume and storage that's needed to serve the three lots is adequate within the existing facility. If not, then they'll have to figure out how to do that. Number twenty-four is removed. And number twenty-five, as part of the, as part of the Park Place subdivision, they had to do a whole tree plan and recompense. And as part of that recompense along the north side of Spyglass Court, they replanted a bunch of trees that were to replace the density for their overall site. All we're asking for with stipulation twenty-five is that those trees be replanted elsewhere on site, and they be recompensed inch per inch. So we're not losing that density because those are, because that area is getting incorporated into the lots. Number twenty-six, this basically requires that first lot that's closest to North Cooper Lake Road to maintain a minimum fifty feet from, a distance of fifty feet from the Cooper Lake Road intersection in their driveway. So they're not trying to pull into their driveway right at the entrance on Cooper Lake Road. Number twenty-seven is all trees within the limits of disturbance have to either be protected or they have to be removed, one or the other. And twenty-eight ties the zoning of the property to the site plan submitted. Twenty-nine ties the zoning of the property to the, to the elevations. And finally, their representation is, has provided a stipulation letter, actually two of them. And I've provided you the one we received on the ninth and a letter from HOA saying that they accept the, these three lots as phase two into the development. Those additional stipulations will be part of the overall stipulations, and they'll be tied to those stipulations as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Are there any questions for Rusty from the board? At this time, we'd like to hear from the applicant, if they could step forward. Good evening, Mr. Sams.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Members of the Planning Commission, for the record, my name is Garvis Sams, and I do represent Craftmark concerning this application for rezoning. I have Mr. Brent Benson with me tonight, and he is seated right behind me here. And so at the appropriate time, either he or I can respond to any questions or address any concerns which you may have. This is an application that was originally scheduled to be heard and considered by, by you as the Planning and Zoning Board last month. But because of the, the ongoing dialogue we'd established with Park Place residents and with staff, we, we felt like it was appropriate to, to ask that it be tabled, and you were kind enough to, to do that. They gave us the latitude to continue those discussions and continue that, that dialogue, which candidly has been extremely helpful for us and we hope helpful for Park Place residents. We do have a smattering of some Park Place residents here tonight. And, and I'd like to begin to, not to create a love fest, but, but to just really thank, thank them. It's so often, it, it's hard to get people with their schedules and their jobs and their kids in a position to be able to, to meet and, and to talk at night times and on weekends and, and times that clearly were inconvenient for, for them, but they, they did that, and we very much appreciate it. But this, this is a zero point eight four acre tract of land, as, as Mr. Martin said, at the intersection of North Cooper Lake and Spyglass. It's suburban residential under your future land use map. And, and we are proposing a total number of three homes, which added to the, the eleven-home subdivision in Park Place, gives a, a total number of fourteen homes at, as Mr. Martin said, a density of two point seven five units per acre. If you look at the, at the density charts that contain within your zoning analysis, you can see a range of densities from two point five to two point nine six units per acre. So clearly, we're in the mid-range of the densities that, that are out there. We've invested a lot of time in this, but more importantly, the, the residents of Park Place have invested a lot of trust in, in Craftmark and in the representations we, we've made for them. And the fact that you tabled it just was complimentary to the process and the way the process is supposed to work so that we could, we think, reach some finality with respect to our agreements. I will say this, between now and the mayor and council meeting, that dialogue will continue. I understand the Councilman Welch has, has scheduled a town hall meeting, I believe it's the twenty-fourth of this month, if I'm not mistaken, to bring not only the Park Place residents into it, but, but also residents along the North Cooper Lake Road corridor who have, have been a, a part of some of the, the more recent growth within this sub-area of the city. We have submitted stipulation letters on, on June the first, submitted a revised stipulation letter on June the eighth, and then I turned around the next day and corrected paragraph five, I believe, of that, of that letter to more closely, not more closely, to accurately state the positioning of Park Place in, in relation to, to what we had discussed with them. The rezoning, if approved or recommended for approval by you, will be in substantial conformance to the revised site plan that is being shown on your monitor that's prepared by Ridge Planning Consultants. The size of the single-family homes, we haven't articulated with any degree of specificity, but they will replicate the range of, of the size of homes that, that you recommended for approval on the mayor and council accepted back in, in two thousand and fourteen. I've handed out to you, and I think Mr. Martin has shown to you, architectural renderings and elevations that depict the architectural style and composition of the homes. We're looking at price points that will be six hundreds. And, and, and the architectural style will be, as I said, consistent. Again, with respect to vehicular traffic and storage of vehicles, there'll be no on-street parking needed because as you can see, the way this is configured with ingress and egress by way of that private access agreement, we have substantive and ample, not only room for parking on the driveways that can accommodate way more than two cars, but also we have two-car garages, which are designed either side or rear entry, which will be dedicated to the storage of at least two vehicles, which doesn't preclude people from using it for other purposes, but, so there'll be no problem there. And notice, if you look at the site plan, the homes are oriented toward Spyglass Court in terms of actually facing it, but there is no access. There are walkways. Some of those walkways may need, because of the slopes that are attendant to the site, may need to have some steps incorporated into that, which is one of the, the components that the Park Place folks brought up and which, assuming it meets with your, your staff's regulations, and I can't help but think that it, that it would, then, then we will do that. Also, as Mr. Martin has talked about, you're, you're seeing a ten-foot. We're calling it undisturbed, but actually, it's, it's a natural maintained buffer. There's, there's tree coverage and shrubbery and vegetation there, but we're, we're enhancing it with a, I, I believe it's a total number of fifteen additional trees. Also, we're putting fencing along that, that common borderline that will extend even beyond what you see here. There's a component of the fence that may exceed the, the six-foot requirement, so we are asking for concurrent variance to the extent that the fence does exceed eight feet. Eight feet would be in the northernmost portion, and as the property winds its way southerly back towards Spyglass Court, the fence goes down in accordance with the topo and the need for privacy. I might add that Mr. Hal Higgins is here tonight. He is the property, well, he and his wife, more importantly, his wife, is the property owner whom we are protecting her. The kitchen area of that home looks directly back onto our, our property, and they maintain a degree of privacy now. We want to ensure that that is maintained in perpetuity for as long as they or their successors and title live there. The, the three new homes, of course, will have HVA systems. They'll be screened from view or by way of fencing, landscaping, or the mere position, positioning of those HVAC and other utility-type of connections, units and installations. The Craftmark is, is the current declarant of this subdivision, meaning just from a layman-esque perspective, right now, there are covenants in place. And until it's all turned over to the, the Park Place residences as an HOA, then, then he's in a position to make decisions. But we have agreed as a stipulation or, or a condition of the zoning to turn over the HOA all its books and records and, and, and the authority, control, and power it has along the covenants, conditions, and restrictions to the residents of Park Place within thirty days of a successful rezoning, hoping for a successful rezoning from the mayor and city council. We've interfaced with the city engineer, your Public Works directors, director, and are amenable to all their recommendations, as well as the City of Smyrna Fire Department in, in terms of fire prevention and life safety issues. We've crafted the, the stipulation letters in such a way so that the council member, which right now is, is Councilman Welch, will be able, in concert with the Community Development Director, Mr. Sudrith, to make minor modifications. Now, that can increase the density or, or, or take away any of the provisions that we provided with respect to Park Place, but it does give your staff and Councilman Welch an opportunity to, to have some input into the process. A couple of things that are contained in the January eighth, excuse me, the June eighth and, and ninth letters provides that the HOA, meaning once turned over to Park Place, will have the authority to review architectural style and composition of the homes, elevation, and also the colors, the color palette of the homes as well. That HOA will have the authority to approve and review landscaping and fencing that will be oriented towards Spyglass Court in the front of these, these homes as, as well. And, and then an additional stipulation, if you look on Spyglass Court, it's sloped in such a way so that the sidewalks will be there, but there's going to be a ten-foot landscape strip along the subject property's frontage on Spyglass Court. Now, that's going to be installed, but the perpetual maintenance of that will be the responsibility and will run as a, not only a stipulation condition of the zoning, but as a covenant on the property owners who ultimately purchased those properties and, and subsequent owners of those, of those properties as well. One important issue, June first letter provided that, that Craftmark would, would set aside twenty thousand dollars to build a fifteen-by-fifteen pavilion right there at the pen corner, the intersection of Spyglass and North Cooper Lake. As discussions have, have progressed, we've changed that. Not we, in, in concert with Park Place, we've changed that. And the way it reads now, and I'll quote, "If the Park Place HOA decides that it does not want Craftmark to construct a new pavilion, then and upon the occurrence of that event, to the extent allowed under the city's ordinances, the existing amenity area will remain, and Craftmark will deposit the sum of twenty thousand dollars into an account designated by the HOA." In other words, the pavilion may ultimately not be what, what the Park Place residents want to do. It was, it was their suggestion and, and our acquiescence, but to give them the full latitude to do what they think or, or want or, or need to do, we'll just simply place that into account. All the stipulations and conditions, not, not otherwise in conflict, both in the two thousand and fourteen zoning, my June first letter, will remain in full force and effect. Again, I want to thank the Park Place residents for their input. Well, I think we've achieved here an excellent template for a tasteful and high-end partnership with the community. And for all these reasons, we do request that you follow your staffs. with the community, and for all these reasons, we do request that you follow your staff's recommendation and that you as a planning commission recommend to the mayor and city council that the application be approved. Chairman, my client here and I are here to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Sambs. Are there any questions from the planning and zoning board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'd like to remind everybody, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on behalf or against this rezoning, please step forward and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Kate Moon. My husband and I purchased the property at 4133 North Cooper Lake Drive three years ago. I've never had to speak to a group like this. I'm very nervous. Please forgive me.
Hey, please, don't be nervous.
If you say so, I won't. First, I'd like to say that we were very pleased when we heard that Craftmark was going to build homes here. We've observed their building across the street from us, the Spyglass area, it's beautiful, lovely. We were very pleased with it. And we came here to see more specifics about what they were planning to do. So although we were, in general, very, very pleased to have them come and build homes here, I was frankly appalled to see that the driveways were going to go, instead of towards Spyglass Drive, they were going to go back towards the access road, which goes to the corner house where James, I don't know his last name, where James lives. So up until now, the only traffic on that access road, which abuts our property and literally goes right up against our backyard fence, okay, and our carport, goes right up against it, instead of having Charlotte visit her mother at that front house that y'all are planning to buy, and James going in and out, we're having the possibility of, in addition to James, having, if it's two-car garages, six people going in and out all the time, and that's going to mean a lot of noise that we did not have before. And seeing as every other house in the Park Place development, the driveway goes toward the streets that they built, we feel that these, I feel, I don't know what my husband thinks, I feel that the driveway should go towards the street. And that's the main thing. Also, you know, they're having buffer along the side over there, next to some of the homes that already exist. I really like something attractive back there, where our house is. But everything else, I mean, yeah, I'd love to have those homes like that near us.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Moon. Is anyone else here to speak? How you doing, sir?
I'm James, I'm James Corona, and this has been my home for 47 years now, and the access road that everyone's discussing about is my driveway. So this is not, I'm not even sure if their legal rights to this is going to be available for this deal to go through or not. This has been a land in our family for pretty much that entire time, so, and before that, we bought it from another family member, and so, we know where the rights are, we have all the surveys, and of course, the landline. This parcel was given that easement right, actually, before that particular property that's being now sanctioned off was even parceled. So this goes back in old farmland. This is the only way to get in, only way to get out, and again, let me make sure I understand, this is my driveway. So it's very quaint back there, very quiet, and that's one of the reasons why we've been in Smyrna for this long. So that's, we don't want to lose that. We weren't opposed about a development coming in, although, I promise you, the bedrooms right now are literally closer between these two, from where I stand and that wall, to that $600,000-plus home from my, you know, small little ranch cottage that's back there still and been there for, which was moved there, actually, 80 years ago. So it's, so not necessarily against the proposal of that, but the driveway, of course, the situation now convenient for them and, you know, looks nice, but it's not what was originally given. And first of all, I've only got hearsay from the actual, the owner of the property that's selling this. Never spoke one time with this contractor. They saw them in 2014, one time when they backed over my mailbox, actually, as they built and constructed that part of it, went through the 18 months of a different opposing developer coming up and clearcutting nine acres behind there, and they'll never recover the density of that green space. So that's kind of a funny thing. The only thing that saves it is the park behind there, and the only reason why there's a park behind there is because that's old sewage actual plant that nobody wanted to have anything to do with, and it was a transfer station up to 1970s and 80s for Smyrna. So, you know, it's a beautiful area, it's happy, you know, there's a nice park back there, too. The neighbors are very kind, and it's good, the community that's redeveloping around there, too, but I just don't want to make sure we forget about what's still there, because I'm the last corner right there before a lot of elder residents right there. I'm the last kind of like my neighbors right there. I mean, they, you know, came to here, moved to this state and this community for that, you know, peace and harmony and a little bit of tranquility that comes around there, too. So before we get to moving too far, nobody's asked me if they could use my driveway, and the answer would be no. I'm not trying to say I'm against this development at all, you know, good for the community to keep growing, but that's a driveway, not an easement, and it's certainly not, we've let that property use it the entire time they've been there. They never had a driveway. So we'd love to have it back at this point. So that's what I have to say, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corona. Is there anyone else would like to speak? How you doing, sir? Good evening.
My name is Art Moon. I'm also 4133, as my wife spoke to you a minute ago.
You're not as nervous, though, are you?
Beg your pardon?
You're not as nervous, though, are you?
No, sir, I'm not. I'm one of those elders James was talking about. And I would like to support the things that Kate and James had to say, and that I've been really pleased with watching the developments go up, that they've put in on both sides of the street there. They were well-managed, they did those construction jobs with a minimal amount of disruption to the community, and the people that have, the people have moved in, and it hasn't been a disruption to the community at all, and as far as I'm concerned, very welcome additions. But I agree with them that the driveway in the back there would be, in my mind, it would be a much nicer arrangement to have the driveways come in to the front or the side of the houses. So it would be, it will definitely increase the traffic adjacent to my property, so I'm, I just want to support the things that James and Kate had to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moon. If you could, just step to the podium, please.
Come on, son. Also, that particular spot is a very dangerous position, situation there. My mailbox has been ran over three times in the last two months. Like, people come in there, it's already ridiculously congested because of the turn in that particular one. It's been that way for 30 years. Somebody has crashed into that. I mean, it's every other, you know, twice a year, three times every two years takes that corner. So it's, the congestion is, I mean, it's hard to determine if that's safe or not, too, but it is, it's not the safest place to be putting that type of traffic right there, so thank you.
Appreciate that, Mr. Corona. We'll try to get some answers on the driveway easement.
Good evening. My name's Chris Sizmore, and I'm here as president of the HOA for Park Place.
How you doing?
Thank y'all for having us tonight. Also have our vice president and the resident who is in Lot 1, who is most affected by this from us. The plan you see up there now is one that is definitely, if you remember the original one that came up, it's not anywhere near what the original ones, all the driveways did come off on Spyglass. As a neighborhood, we were concerned about that. Brent and his team at Craftmark have spent the last probably two months going back and forth with us to try to come up with something that would, we thought would benefit the area, that would help the neighborhood, because, you know, right now, anybody come in and put two homes, whether we have a say-so or not. So we took this as an opportunity to come in here, keep things consistent, same type of elevations, and I would make a recommendation that for anybody who lives, and especially for you two that, you know, that are right next to it, and you is behind, you're behind one of our neighbors, to reach out to Brent or reach out to Garvis. To say I was shocked that we had a communication back and forth, you know, would be an understatement, because I honestly didn't think we were going to have communication. I think they've gone above and beyond, even when, you know, Garvis mentioned the pavilion. The reason we said we're not sure if we want to do that pavilion is because we found out that there is a ramp in our neighborhood that we're, even though it's on city property, we're responsible for, so our liability shot through the roof. So we want to basically a rainy day fund, just in case. So we want to do some landscaping, but we want to keep a rainy day. We thought that would be best for the neighborhood, but still have an option. If we wanted a pavilion, we could, but that's why that stipulation was changed. But as a neighborhood, we got together again this past weekend. Everybody was in favor of this development and how it is. Like I said, it was a request from us to swap the driveways back to that easement, but I would say, reach out to Brent, reach out to Garvis. They've been more than willing to come out and meet with us, walk the properties, and discuss how it can benefit everybody, because I definitely understand where you're coming from. We don't want the driveways coming into Spyglass because we're a public street already. We already have issues with excessive parking, so people can't get to the park in our neighborhood. So I think if we all work together, I think we can come up with a solution that actually works for all of us. So that would just be a, something I would say and add to it. And I think our neighbor, Hal, who was in that Lot 1, who's more personally affected by all this, is going to come up and say something.
Okay. Appreciate that, Mr. Sizmore. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. As Chris pointed out, my name's Hal Higgins, owner of Lot 1 there in the southeastern corner of...
Name?
Hal Higgins.
Hal Higgins, thank you, sir.
And, you know, not to regurgitate everything that was said, we've been in good communications and appreciate the efforts that Brent and Garvis have gone through, but just as an individual homeowner for that lot, I was opposed completely to having this zone for three lots. Two was fine, but I talked with Mr. Benson to say, you know, how are you going to protect me from, you know, the reasons my wife and I bought this lot for, you know, the privacy? We didn't want somebody overlooking us because of the elevation. For the layman's not shown here, that house number three is significantly higher than, you know, my lot there. So pretty much any type of buffer that you try to put up, is it going to serve the purpose of being a buffer? Because the house will look right over onto my lot. But they've done a good job in trying to give me what I wanted as far as a buffer and that kind of thing, and so I do appreciate that. But, you know, the driveway thing is more of an issue now, if they wanted to come off of Spyglass, you know, we were against that, and that's why you see what we have. But I just wanted to say that, you know, I think collaboratively, we can get this done with three, but as far as the variances and stuff like that that's being requested, it's an integral part of getting this passed, because I've also, I think Garvis mentioned it earlier, about the eight-foot fence, because I think maybe it's six-foot now, but that would be very, very critical to me as well. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. We have a couple of questions, I guess mainly concerning the easement, and Mr. Sambs, if you'd like to address that. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there. Sorry about that. How you doing this evening? Your name and...
My name is Mike, my name is Mike Lady. I am actually the HOA president of Cooper Lake Place, which is directly across the street. If you look to the left, you'll see the street there, that's Sophia Lane, and then down you see Spyglass Court. The only thing that I have to say about this, I mean, I have no dog in the fight in terms of the housing, but I do have some dog in the fight when it comes to traffic flow. And to the point of the gentleman earlier, that area is congested, to the point that you have to be extremely careful how you pull out of Sophia Lane now to get on to North Cooper Lake, turn and left, to the point where we have people who have started and stopped because of the traffic coming, and it's not very visible. I've actually spoken to the city about this already, and my point is, is that if you're going to add more homes there, I just think that that's a very short distance from back, on that backside of that lot, Spyglass, and you've got 20, 32, 35 homes sitting right there. So what I would like to see, the city to look at traffic in terms of putting up some visual signs, there's one now that sits just north of Cooper Lake, of Sophia Lane now, doesn't work. You know, I've asked how it's supposed to work, and I've watched it doesn't work. I would like them to move something in front of Sophia Lane, so that when people come out, at least they have some visibility of somebody coming down from the other direction. So again, I have no dog in the fight in terms of the housing itself, but I think I do have some dog in the fight when it comes to traffic flow in that area, and I would like for the city to take a look at that, because that is a part of the first presentation I saw, I presented traffic flow or something to that extent, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments from the public before we start addressing some of the issues that have been raised? There being none. Mr. Sambs, could you address the easement issue, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to, and it's not a rebuttal, it's simply a response and an explanation. First of all, from a title, a legal perspective, I understand Mr. Corona, it's his driveway, he's used it historically speaking, but from a legal perspective, it is a platted easement. We do have the ability and right to use that. But that being said, that doesn't obviate or preclude a dialogue we can establish with him and the Moons and others between now and mayor and council. So not only is it platted, it's a legal easement which we can utilize, it's going to be paved, and it's going to be widened to better accommodate the folks that have just spoken. It is also interesting in that that access point was chosen, not just unilaterally by Mr. Benson and by us, but with input from, of course, Park Place residents, with engineering input from Eric Randall, who is the city engineer, and with input from the balance of your staff with respect to site distance issues and queuing and turning movements from Spyglass Court. Any positioning of driveway, particularly at the first lot you see on the corner, the pin corner of Spyglass and North Cooper Lake Road, poses considerable problems in terms of lacking the requisite distance between that intersection and wherever that driveway would be put on that frontage. So with the slopes that are in play, with the negotiations we've reached, with the improvements to the easement that we have a legal right to, that being said, I plan to get the Moon's telephone number and Mr. Corona's telephone number, and the last gentleman, whose name I didn't catch, and tomorrow, we'll begin our discussions with them.
Thank you. That actually, you have a, sorry.
I don't know if this is for you or the HOA. It sounded like the president of the HOA was saying that they didn't want additional cars coming into the neighborhood because there's already a parking issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the easement, is parking allowed back there?
No, will not be parking on the easement.
Though, any guests that come in are not going to be able to park on that easement street anyways.
Right.
I don't know who needs to answer that, but I'm just...
Well, let me say this, we've got a condition that we've agreed to, that staff has imposed as well, that the driveways will be at least 22 feet in length. If you look at the configuration of the side and rear entry, you can see that we have more than ample room for two. I mean, in some respects, three and four, dedicated two-car garages. These are not townhomes, it's a different circumstance with it being single-family detached, but yes, that's one of the articulator reasons the Park Place residents, they don't want to see on-street parking. And quite candidly, with respect to the scopes, scopes, the slopes in front of the properties under Spyglass, the problematic slope of the driveway might exceed the city standards, but Mr. Randall's not here tonight, so he can't speak for that, but I hope that responds partially.
Sure, I just want to remind everybody that this, the planning and zoning meeting is not the be-all, end-all. There's, this will go also before council. This is a recommendation of the planning and zoning board.
My comment on parking was more of an ongoing issue that we're having, you know, Park Place is a double cul-de-sac, dead-end street, but at least four times a week, we have a number of cars that come in to use our neighborhood as parking for the park, even though that there is a... Yeah, nobody's there, and when I've called the city, they said there's nothing we can do about it because that street is a public street. And we've had run-ins with certain individuals with dogs off-leash, cussing... individuals with dogs off-leash cussing at our kids, and so that was more of our issue, is that we're public streets, and the city told us, hey, if somebody wants to park there, you can't say anything about it. And so, that was our issue of, if people are gonna park there, let them be guests of the residents or residents that are there versus we're now extra parking for the park, and that was more along where my statement was going.
Kind of mentioned it from hearing the other community members, I mean, you know, if one of those three new homes has a party, are those people parking on Spyglass, or are they parking, you know, in the driveway, or that's why I asked Garvis, like, is that easement going to allow parking? And if it is a no-parking street, then I would hope that Mr. Corona would appreciate that as well. I also don't understand what, like you just said, if there's ample parking at that park, why people are parking in your neighborhood to be...
Yeah, that's our, yeah, for us, as, as long as there are residents or it's, their neighborhood's having a party, we've done it already, yeah, you can park it on, on our streets. It was just, we're, you know, right now, eleven homes, and we could have, as the city said, you could have a hundred cars in your neighborhood that don't live there, and it doesn't matter, because it's a public street.
Thank you, Mr. Sizemore, for those additional comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Welcome back, Ms. Moon.
Maybe I didn't explain well enough. My main concern was the noise of having all those cars packed back there when we didn't have them back there before, and you're talking six cars, and then if they're gonna be having parties, that's even more noise, and that'll all be going back and forth when these people are living at a prestige address on Spyglass. If they're going to choose to live in the prestige address of Spyglass, they should access the Spyglass Street, is my feeling.
I see. Thank you. Mr. Martin.
I, I just wanted to clarify something from a staff perspective. We just reacted to the plan that was submitted to us. There was no opinion provided based on whether staff required it to be on access easement or on Spyglass. We just reacted to what was proposed, and the plans that we had received, it all come from, from the access easement, and one plan had Lot One with their driveway basically at the North Cooper Lake entrance, and we asked them to flip that, so we're not having cars back out on, or backing out into the easement right at the entrance to the subdivision and causing traffic flow issues at that point. But I just wanted to clarify that. There, there was no preference from staff as to where these driveways are coming from. It's just, we reacted to what was submitted.
Thank you, Rusty, for that additional clarification. Appreciate everyone's comments tonight. Like I said, this is the planning and zoning meeting, so it's a recommendation for council, and that will be heard. I understand through the comments made tonight from the applicant that they'll be in touch with, with various constituents that have stepped up here to share their opinions, and we appreciate those. I think at this time, I will call for a motion for the zoning request Z17001, 008.
Mr. Chairman on zoning request Z17008, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional, I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. We have a second from Denny Campo, and we'll now have a vote. Pretty much your comments. Request Z17010, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for development of two homes at a density of 5.99 units per acre, landlot 487-2925 Mann Street. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
You guys will hear it tonight, and it'll go for mayor and council on the seventeenth of July. J Carpenter Homes is requesting to rezone the subject property from R15 to RAD conditional for two single-family homes. They're proposing to tear down the existing home and accessory structure and build two new homes. The homes will face Stevens Street with one access from Stevens and the other access from Maine, from Mann Street. As you can see on this zoning vicinity map, there are two lots, official lots record, one with the existing home on it, and then sort of a remnant parcel that is zoned R15, but doesn't meet the minimum zoning requirements for R15, and is not developable in, in staff's opinion. The applicant is proposing to reconfigure those two lots into two buildable lots of record, and then build the new homes. The existing land, the future land use for this site is medium-density residential, which allows up to six units per acre, and as you can see on the future development map, the properties to the east and the west are all, have a future land use designation of, in south, have a future land use designation of medium-density residential. The properties across Stevens Street have a moderate-density residential land use classification. This request does not require any change to the, to the future land use map. Here's the proposed site plan, as I stated before. Both residences will be oriented towards Stevens Street. Lot Two will have a front-entry facade, and Lot Three will have a side-entry or rear-entry driveway off of Mann Street. They're proposing the following setbacks for the site, a front setback of twenty-five feet, interior side setback between the homes of seven and a half feet, and an exterior side, which is your east side, on the right-hand side, would be ten feet, and the street side, on the left-hand side, along Mann Street, would be twenty-five feet, and a rear setback of thirty. As stated, I was just calling out the access to the homes. They would also be required to provide a, a ten-foot right-of-way dedication, since they're, the right-of-ways are thirty-foot wide right-of-ways, and we try to bring them up to city standards, which is fifty feet. So, we'll ask for ten on this side and ten on the other side, if we ever need it. Here are the proposed stormwater detention facilities, so all the impervious surface areas from each of these lots will go into these facilities, and, and that'll be the method in which they meet the stormwater management requirements for the city. Here's some examples of the type of architecture they're gonna provide out there. It's a pretty consistent with what's going on in the area. Here's the subject property. As you can see, it's a single-family home with a detached garage in the back, and then these are the adjacent properties. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for two single-family homes at the density of 5.99 units per acre, with the standard conditions from Section 1201, except for Conditions 2, 3, 4, 8, 9, 10, and 17, with special conditions, number 10, related to the setbacks. We've gone over those. Number 11 requires a minimum driveway length of, of twenty-two feet. Number 12 requires a ten-foot right-of-way dedication on Mann and Stevens. Number 13, all new water and sewer tubs should be bored. Number 14, make sure that there's a minimum of fifty feet from the intersection of Mann and Stevens to the, to the closest edge of the driveway apron on Mann Street. And number 15 ties the zoning to the site plan. Number 16 ties the zoning to the building elevations, and then number 17 includes the additional agreed-upon stipulations from the applicant in the letter from June 15th from the applicant's lawyer. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Are there any questions for Planning and Zoning Board from Mr. Martin? There being none, is the applicant in attendance. Welcome back, Mr. Samz.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Again, good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Board. For the record, again, my name's Garvis Samz, and thank you for hearing me twice in, in a row, and I'll, I'll try to be brief on this. We represent J Carpenter Homes concerning this application for rezoning. I have Mr. John Hicks with me tonight, who's seated just behind me and to my, and to my left, so at the appropriate time, he can respond to any questions that perhaps I'm not able to handle. This is one that's in Ms. Hyne Warren's ward. As always, Mr. Martin has done an excellent job providing you with the information. I'd like to, certainly not reiterate that, but dwell on just some additional things to cover some issues from our perspective. As she mentioned, this, this is a small tract, but it's a combination of a non-conforming tract and a conforming tract, and is 0.334 acres, as you can see, located at the southeast corner of Mann and, and Stevens Street. It is zoned R15, it, it is within medium-density under your future land use map, and we're not asking for a, a land use map change. We are asking, or I'm asking, that you look at the, at the, and, and, and to give your staff kudos, they do an excellent job with their, their research, and they tee it up for me on the research that maybe I, I haven't done or done as comprehensively, but you have a, seven different infill pieces of property that are shown on the, on the comparison chart, with densities ranging from 3.31 units per acre up to 6.67. We're at 5.99, and though that was not calculated one way or the other, that's just the way it, it happened mathematically, but we are within the upper mid-range of those densities. We have had some, some input from area residents, not in an ordered amount, we fielded some phone calls, and Mr. Martin put me in touch with, with an individual who was copied on the, on the stipulation letter. I haven't, I haven't heard back from him since then. We're agreeable to all the special stipulations, the standard stipulations, and all the stipulations that are contained. Mr. Martin said June 15th, it is June, June 5, stipulation letter, just, just for purposes of the record. The existing structures on, on the site, the house and the detached garage will, of course, be demolished within, within an appropriate amount of time upon a rezoning by the, the mayor and council. What we have agreed to is that the house size will range from a minimum of 2,750 up to 4,500 square feet and, and beyond. I, I don't see it getting much, much above that in terms of the, the product that, that we propose. The architectural style and composition will be, as you've seen, what's been handed out and what was submitted with the, the application. Again, the two-car garage is plenty of room to, to park two additional vehicles. There's on-street parking if you want it, but quite candidly, even though the city allows it, I, I think it'll be frowned upon at this particular closeness of these driveways to this intersection of Stevens and, and Mann Street, so we've provided enough parking, we think, from a guest perspective, so that won't happen. Interesting thing about this, at least I learned something from this, from a stormwater management perspective, and that is the utilization of flow wells. I've seen something similar to this from stormwater management and detention water quality perspective, but not quite in, in this fashion. What these flow wells are, they're placed in stone encasements for water quality and, and storage, and you can see it at the various locations on the, on the site, and also all the, the roofs going through the gutters go directly to the streets, which go to these, these, these flow wells, as shown on the, on the site plan. Typically, we don't get into that much detail, except during plan review, but anticipating that there might be some questions on stormwater management, we did, we did include those on the, on the site plan. We are asking that you grant, and I don't know if this is anticipatorily necessary or not, but we're granting, voluntarily granting, conveying ten-foot of right-of-way on each street, Mann and Stevens, to the extent that may encroach or have us encroach into the, those setbacks. From an administrative position, I think staff has taken the position that they have no problems with the concurrent variances being granted to accommodate that, since we're voluntarily conveying that right-of-way. My thanks to staff and, and the area residents on this. I don't mean to cut it short, we, I can get into as much detail as you want, but being the last on the agenda with a modicum of, of opposition or those interested at this time, Mr. Chairman, I do respectfully request that, that you do recommend the mayor and council, but can address any questions you have.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Samz?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, again, this is a public meeting, so if anyone in for or against this, this application, please step forward. All right, there being none. Ms. Warren?
I would like to make a motion to approve zoning request seven-one, excuse me, Z17-01 RAD conditional for the two homes at 2925 Mann Street, with the special stipulations that staff has presented this evening, and I motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second from Ms. Lightfoot. Now, we'll have a vote. Motion passed as unanimous. Last item on our agenda this evening is the... One's in possession of those minutes, and if we could get a motion to accept those. We have a motion, Mr. Rice, second, Mr. Monroe. Motion passes unanimous. This evening, I know that we had a, some lively discussion and then very, very timely. It being now 7:23, I will close the Planning and Zoning Board for June 12th. Thank you.
Very good.